Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, October 15, 2015 meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established. All members are present. Is there anyone who is expecting to speak before the commission? Okay. And do you promise to tell the truth through the commission as best you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Any additions, deletions, concerns?
Sorry, I missed it. It sounded like a nice meeting.
Very nice. We're all good? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that the Losa audio?
Pretty much. I'm going to approve.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. There's a second?
A second.
A second. All in favor? Aye. Aye, with one abstention. Let's see. Case number 15-20, the southeastern Ohio real estate, former Pioneer subdivision lot split. Mr. Paskey, do you care to just remind our audience what's going on here?
Yeah. Last meeting, we wanted to get information or we sent information to ODOT to inform them of the lot split since it's within the distance requirements that they should be notified. And as you can see by the email attachment within this packet here, I did notify them. And they sent me back a response that they do not have any comments at this time on either the lot splits. I also sent them the stuff on the old Peach Ridge one, or the old Peach Road lot splits we did a few months ago even. So I think this will be a good policy. I talked to them. They liked the idea that we notified them whether it was required or not. I think it's good to let them know. So they liked it. But at this time, they didn't have any comments in regards to it. And basically, their response to me was, no comment means move forward.
And I know this is a critical, Johnson Roadside is always a problematic intersection. Is the other side Riverside as bad, do you know? Or has there been feedback on that?
I mean, coming out at all.
Well, okay. This is, one side's River Road, right? And that would be the east side, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
And the other side's Johnson, right?
Well, Johnson's got parakeet or turn lanes and all that now, so.
Yes. And that's because there have been problems there. I'm just wondering if the entire, all quadrants have been affected on this.
I don't know.
I guess they don't, they're not worried about it, so we shouldn't.
Yeah. This was in regards to them wanting to purchase the property. If there's a lot split proposal within a certain distance of a state route or state highway, then you notify them to see if maybe they have future plans to develop the area, put an off-ramp or something, and that gives them the right to come in and say, well, hey, we'd like to put input on this and possibly purchase it ahead of time.
Oh, I see.
And they did not indicate that that was in their plans.
Okay. So it's not really a safety issue so much as just an acquisition?
Correct. That is correct.
I didn't understand that. Okay. Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns before we vote? We're all good with everything? Okay. Somebody wants to make a motion on?
I'll make the motion, even though I'm probably the greenest one here. I move that we accept a lot split, case number 15-20, southeast Ohio real estate from the Pioneer subdivision.
And there's no conditions that we really wanted to make on this?
No.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications. Does anybody have anything they wanted to bring up in this section?
Anyone want to talk about bed and breakfast to council?
We put it in front of council.
Citizen vein?
I just wanted them to understand that there was a reason why we said own.
Yes.
And I think they might, you know, I mean, you might not understand.
Well, again, I tried emphasizing as well, the idea that if you could, if the requirement owner occupied and the flavor of bed and breakfast from my point are overlap. And the concept, you could say, if we don't require owner occupation, you could have somebody buy up a row of these houses and turn it all into bed and breakfasts. And again, part of the issue, I guess, conceptionally is, will this, how would this influence our percentage of rental market? I mean, would it expand or contract? I've heard arguments in both ways. You know, the idea as well, if I turn my house into bed and breakfast, I can stay in it and, you know, and, you know, make my income. At that point, it is still owner occupied, but it's, you know, it's changed its flavor. On the other hand, we are, what, 74% rental, somewhere in that range? And do we need to increase that footprint? Because that really relates to wear and tear on the city in terms of our infrastructure. And the other concept, they will have to have a public hearing. They expect to have some input from the public along the way. Again, my concern is that we take, they would take, I would hope they take it slow and not drop it down to R1s and R2s. I would also, the explanation that they could go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for a variance for an R1, R2, I think is probably not valid. Because again, you have been on the zoning board of appeals and you are aware that you have to go through several findings.
Okay.
And the findings include, you know, variance given to make minimal use of the lot. And turning an R1 to a bed and breakfast is not what I consider a requirement to use a lot. Special privileges.
Yeah. That's what we were just talking. I don't even think you can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, ask them for it in an R1 or R2, because you can only request a variance for permissible use within that zone. And this would not be a permissible use within those zones.
I think that needs to be clarified to council, though. I mean, you deal with zoning board of appeals every day. Yeah, almost every day, probably. I deal with, I was on six years. I don't know how long you were on. Okay, lots of years. So the idea is, we're aware of the fact that this, the findings and the conclusions of the finding, of making those findings can shift over time.
Well, they wouldn't even get there. And once somebody come to my office with a request, I'd just say it's not eligible to even go there, so.
The other thing, at the end of the city council meeting, I think some of the council members, they have their little laptops there booted up and said that there's still a bunch of ARB and Bs on the site, therefore, we still have them in the city.
We do.
Okay. I assume we're?
Best I can. Unfortunately, the ones that are listed on there now, we're not able to identify the exact locations, so.
You mean, so if you sign up and show up with?
Well, that's, that's, we can discuss that kind of offline, how we want to go about doing that. So the signing up procedure is a little different than just signing up, so.
Okay. I didn't know. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I looked into that.
Okay.
So that's, unless you want to add anything?
The only other one, and I don't know if this is the right place, or it would be under other businesses, are we going to undertake a Title 41 review? It's reminded by the planner that we've talked about some issues that we'd like to change and we'd want to look at it comprehensively.
How do you guys feel about that?
For what?
To review the process, that it's working for us.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Looking for the?
Well, it was a compromise, probably. Agree. I'm certainly open to that.
Okay. I'm not sure what the urgent, what the needs are, but I'm sure we'll find some along the way, so we may as well look at it.
I didn't have any needs, for the record. There was a few comments I've heard at planning commission meetings, and Paula mentioned it to me. And I said, you know, if the best thing to do would be the planning commission to review Title 41, and if they want to make comments on process, the best way to do that is then just make recommendations to council to change process, just change the ordinance slightly. We've reviewed it, I think, twice in the past since it's been created, Mayor.
Yeah.
Maybe only once, actually. I think when Debbie Phillips was on councils, when it was established, you were probably on council at that time as well. And I think after the first 12 months or after we had a handful of cases, there were a few comments that the planning commission made to council, and they changed. They made a few alterations to it. But we might want to review it again. I don't think it would hurt. Even technologically, things have changed with how paperwork's are, you know. I think it says, like, you have to bring in a compact disk or something with your files on it, but, you know, there's just ways we can approach these things now.
It's process, like he's saying. It's time, you know, at what time, when it's brought in, the procedure, how long it sits before, you know, I think the way we're doing it right now works, but maybe it ought to be documented as to what your policy is ought to be written. And Paul's right on seven sets of drawings. I think right now, it's a lot of paper waste. I'm sending it to you electronically. Myself and Andy are the only ones that really are looking at it electronically. And I've got five sets of drawings that aren't even looked at on every project that's coming through. So I don't think, you know, we can change some of those, some of those.
The language says big drawings, too.
Right.
Not legal size or letter size it's got to be.
24 by 36, so.
So some paper waste.
Okay. So you'll have some recommendations, or should we just hash it out?
Well, one of my questions was regarding, like, we're going to have in the near future the Athens sports cycle, but it's not really required to do a preliminary presentation. And is that necessary? But it's just those.
I think it's good to have a little bit of lead time, more than a day or two.
Which is something referred from you, so.
Paul, you're absolutely right. Right now, it does not require a preliminary presentation.
That would be.
You know, it's supposed to be advertised, or not advertised, but sign posted two weeks prior on the site, which we are doing. I'm trying to get it to the point where, once they bring it into me, then I'm telling the applicant at least four weeks from that point before you even come here. Because that gives Andy and I and fire and police an opportunity to get our comments done, get it back to the architects, let them make the changes, get it back to us, review us a second time. Unfortunately, that second time has been coming, as you all well know, probably on Tuesday night before they're actually coming here. And by the time I get it to you, yeah, it's been through our internal process and all the changes that we like to see have been made and accommodated for, but you guys haven't seen it yet ahead of time. Doesn't even give you an opportunity really to visit the site if you wish to do so. So, you know, maybe we get, we put something in that, if you don't have it back in by this, the Friday before the meeting, or whatever it may be, then you're bumped two more weeks, you know. But getting it in writing might help. So, and I think we discussed this once before, a long time ago.
Yeah.
And I did kind of put together an internal policy while we're doing it, but it's still not written. So, and there are architects, as we know, that come in here with drawings for you with amendments on it that I haven't even seen yet the day of the meeting, and that's somewhat embarrassing, to be honest, so.
Now, these are minor changes that look like they need to be done.
But I do think that if we go back to the day, there was concern that it was going to gum up the process.
No.
I remember Larry Payne was saying, you've got to have this timeline on there.
And I think that we can look at some of the specifics, too. Right now, we're saying commercial projects by 1,000 square foot and over. Even the ones under 5,000, we're treating them that they pretty much have to go through the same policy and procedure as a Title 41, even though, as far as the amount of drawings. Maybe you don't have to put the distance requirements and all the abutting zones and so on and so forth on the drawings, but that the Title 41 requires. But we're still wanting to make sure it has adequate egress and ingress and has adequate utility hookups and that the utilities are there. So, you know, why not include those in a different manner? Maybe we add something that, something to that effect. I don't know. Just, we can talk about it.
Since we're on communication, a couple, it could be under announcements of the business, of course, is two things. One is, I've had some discussions about trying to update the comprehensive plan. It's about 10 years old now. It probably wouldn't be in my term of office, obviously, but the next thing to do is start thinking about that as a planning commission, how we want to proceed. You know, I don't think it needs to be thrown all out, and I know we had the comprehensive review commission.
Could use an update.
Could use an update, yeah. And we were looking at corridors and Bs, 1s, 2s, and 3s, but the next thing is, say, okay, what do we want to change on it? What have we accomplished in the past 10 years? And I know some things have, the establishment of, you know, the sustainability commission as well as the historic preservation commission.
Right.
But this is something for the, you know, as a planning commission, I would bring up for something to think about next year, maybe, and how you want to, how do you want to go about doing that? The other one, of course, is, let's see, the, I had a contact with Roger Bale. He's trying to reestablish the policy committee, the solid waste, the solid waste district. I know Nancy, you were on that at one time. I was on it. I, I, no. But there are some members that have to reestablish and reappoint along the way. So that was something that, you know, that will have to occur sooner or later. And it's really just a, they require it every five years to do this, but they're going to do it a little short because some of the, some of the changes, strategies that were put forward in terms of solid waste have not been accomplished or it's taken a turn. And I think it's, everything's okay with EPA, but I think they want to reaffirm what's being done. This has to do with the MRF and the recycling system. And I just mentioned, because they will need bodies, it's usually a 15-member commission. Very specific on who represents who, but from the Athens side, they need seven, and from the Hocking County side, they need seven. So, you know, if we're thinking in terms of what we want to see in the future, and this is part of the planning body, I'd recommend that we, you know, at least track it. That's all I really have.
Anything else? Okay. See, report from the city planner?
I just, I have a few updates. The Historic Preservation Commission met on Monday. They had updated building elevations for 10 West Union Street that they reviewed. There's no changes to anything that were reviewed by the planning commission as far as through the Title 41 process or anything like that. It was just that they wanted to make some changes to some of the materials and treatments that they were using for the buildings. So the preservation commission reviewed the changes. They were actually, they liked the new proposal a lot better than the proposal that was given to them about a month or two ago. So they were really pleased about that. They also, the representatives, RVC Architects, gave them updated site plans for 12 West Union Street, which is the next property over. They wanted to make a few alterations to the plans for that. Again, no changes to what were reviewed by the planning commission. It was just some changes with the materials and treatments for the building. They did not ask for an approval at that meeting. They're going to come back for the November meeting and ask for an approval from the preservation commission, but they seem to be pleased with the update, that it was an improvement on, as from what they reviewed last month. And I think, just as a, as a comment, the, we're, these were the first times that the preservation commission had to review plans to make sure that they were appropriate for historic district. And I think the process is, is going very well. It does help that we're in a small town where there's typically only a few architecture firms that they would be working with, but they're establishing good dialogues with the architecture firms, so that they know, kind of already have a feel for what to expect, so they can prepare for that and make sure that they're doing the right materials and doing a little bit of their research upfront prior to coming in. So that's really been helpful. The preservation commission is also, I've been working with them for 2016. Part of the requirements of the certified local government program is that they need to do education and outreach to the community. We're trying to partner with the state of, state historic preservation office. They have a program every year that they call the Building Doctor Program, that we're, we've requested for that to be in Athens. They do 10 sites around the state every year. We asked if they would do a program in Athens. It's a two-day program with an evening meeting on a Thursday, which is open to the public, and they bring in these building doctors who are experts on historic preservation for buildings, and do presentations on what it means and how to approach it. And then the next day, on a Friday, they do, we can have up to 10 private properties, whether they be homes or commercial properties that are at least 50 years old. The building doctors will, will give a one-hour session specifically to the property owner to go through the house and give comments on what they can do, if they, if they're wanting to do a remodel project or do some major improvements, so that they're making sure that they're following historic preservation standards, just as a courtesy, because a lot of homeowners and business owners are unaware of what it means. So we're working on that for next year, hopefully in March. We wanted to get it early in the season, prior to construction really kicking off. We're still trying to work out the details, and it was recommended that we try to do some cosponsorship. So we're going to talk with the Athens County Historical Society, and maybe some of the architecture firms as well, to see if they're interested in helping out and participating. So I think that'll be a really good program. The sustainability commission, we are continuing to work on the sustainability plan. We're getting closer by the week. I think within the next month, we should have a really good draft, within the next month, month and a half. And the armory, I think at the last meeting, I touched on the Phase 1 EPA study. We did, I met with the Port Authority yesterday as part of that EPA study. It was recommended that we move forward with a Phase 2 EPA study, which will go into a little bit more detail and research on the building, including checking soil samples, and give us a remediation plan for how to deal with possible contaminants on the site. As I said at the last meeting, it was identified that there's asbestos and lead-based paint in the building. Nothing else was really found, but it did say that there could be creosote from the rail, there used to be a rail, rail line in the back of it from when it was a mining operation prior to the building being constructed. And so there could be creosote from railroad ties, or also it could be leaching from underground storage tanks from nearby properties, from, from old gas stations, et cetera. So I did meet with them, had a conversation about moving forward with that, but we haven't finalized anything at this point. And I believe city council appropriated funds for, to do tuck work on the building, to do masonry work for the brick.
Yeah. It's been authorized.
Correct.
I assume there'll be, I think, is there going to be a requirement for match for the Phase 2? I assume there is.
I would expect it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you, do you have a timetable when that would actually kick in? So it's in this year's budget versus the next year's?
That's what I'm, that's what I wanted to resolve. I just have to have a follow-up conversation with Sarah Morris about that. But I believe the consultants, you know, if we wanted to get moving in 2015, we could do so.
Okay. In terms of the historic preservation, education outreach, it's always possible to utilize the government channel for some PSAs?
We have, well, we have in the past. I'm not sure if they were still doing it, but we did, we set up a collaboration with the Historic, Historical Society. They did, they do brown bag luncheons, or they were for a while, and they were bringing in speakers and doing that. And the government channel was videotaping those presentations and putting them on the streaming video, as well as on Channel 5 or Channel 9. I'm not sure if those presentations are still going on. The guy from Matt, who moved a few months ago, he was the one coordinating that with the preservation commission.
I was thinking more in terms of, you know, PSAs, of how do I get my house registered? What does it mean?
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know, how would I check it out and see what the history of my house is or something?
That's a good point.
You know, 30-second shots to make that, you know, I'd say, to make everybody a little bit more comfortable with the concept.
I'll, I'll put that as an agenda item to discuss at the next meeting. That's a good point.
You could even go through a fast run of all the historical markers in the city, too. Because we have quite a few.
Right.
Berry Hotel, Court Street, Hooker T. Washington, right? And the other Civil War veteran and veteran, I think, three off the top of my head.
Right.
Okay.
That's all I have this, this afternoon.
Mr. Paskey?
As Paula noted to a little bit ago, we will have a couple Title 41s coming up in the near future. One of them is the Athens sports cycle on Columbus Road, storage facility for their existing use, for basically to store the bikes as they come in and assemble them there. So they will not be doing any maintenance work or anything like that within the facility, and it has been through the WOLED committee, so everything's okay, based on the way they're wanting to perform or execute their operation in the building. The other one will be for Don Wood, is looking to build a Ford dealership on East State Street out by the Athens Auto Tech and Super 8 Motel on that property out there, just on the other side of the 50. So that one has not come in to me yet, other than some sketches that they've talked about and that, so, but I know it's on the horizon very soon, from what I've been told.
That's in the floodplain, or some of it's in?
That is actually, part of the law more that was done, was it not, back when Holzer was built and all those properties there?
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Tuesday night, we did have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. There was only one case, and that was for a conditional use for a bakery in the basement of the, where the Stages daycare is. And it was approved 5 to 0 for a conditional use permit there. And speaking of which, I should have mentioned this on the bed and breakfast part. The two bed and breakfasts that we have now, and I've gotten a few phone calls from the media about this as well. The one on Richland Avenue will be grandfathered as the changes go through. It was a permissible, or a conditional use that was approved because Richland Avenue was considered one of the main artery streets. The one on Stimson was a one-year temporary variance, was not a conditional use. It was a temporary variance permit because Stimson was not one of the approved state routes or streets that was on that. If the ordinance, or if the recommendation goes through council as presented by the planning commission, they will have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance for owner occupied, not being owner occupied, although the use will be permissible. They will not have, they will not be owner occupied. So that one did not have a conditional use permit, which a lot of people were thinking it did, so.
Mr. Paskey, could, could you consult with the law, I mean, with the law director?
I already did.
Okay. And what did she say?
Just what I just said.
You know, over the last two days?
An hour ago, two hours ago.
An hour ago, and she said that although they were treated under one law, if the change goes through before their application, they'll be, they'll be, I thought we fought the American Revolution on that.
They weren't. They, they were given a temporary variance.
Well.
Because of Stimson Road not being one of the approved streets.
Because it was being reviewed. They knew, they knew it was being reviewed.
Well, you guys, yeah, right. So.
And not going to do with a conditional use.
I never thought it was.
They did not have a conditional use permit.
I think it's, you're kind of pulling, well, I'm going to ask for a second.
What is it? The issue is related to requesting a variance that may not be requestable. I know that's not a word.
Yeah, may not be grantable. But, you know, it doesn't matter. Grantable is as bad as.
Nothing more can be done until the council decides what they want to do. That's, that's a given. If anything, if it's not resolved by March, which is when the one year comes up, they can come back to the BZA for an extension of their temporary variance. They can do that, and that's what will have to happen if they do not have, if council does not change the language for bed and breakfasts prior to that, so.
I think they could get to temporary, and then they have to go to the planning commission.
Yeah. But my concern is that, you know, I guess you're putting undue pressure on council on the revision, because they're going to say, well, they can't do it now. And in fact, the only reason why it didn't, when it was first asked for, was because of the street was not being a state street. And it wasn't even a crossing the river when the council's ordinance, initial ordinance for zoning was passed. You know, and it's flimsy. It seems to me that we're, we're putting too much pressure on it, rather than trying to revise it and upgrade it and everything else. Just my opinion. I'm going to just ask Lisa.
I just want to clarify for you. What was given? What was issued?
You know, I hadn't looked at the record, but it just seemed to me that if they went through it, and the only thing that issued was the road, then you're going to make them subject to the new conditions, not a conditional use permit. I mean, so if the only thing that was wrong with the road was not listed, then why would you request that they go through this new approach?
Because this whole temporary variance was issued based on whatever council comes up with in the new code. And if the new, and if they come up in the new code, then it has to be owner occupied. You can't just say, you can't say, well, we're going to recognize Stimson as one of the streets, but not recognize the other conditions. It's all or none. And if, and if one of the conditions is that it has to be owner occupied, then they'll have to get a variance for it.
Oh, so you're going to allow them to go for a variance?
It would be acceptable, absolutely, because it's in a B3, which our code, we're, we're allowing that.
It just seemed like there was a lot of excessive requirements in the case, which was pretty straightforward under the old code. And it might give zoning a bad impression. Okay.
Actually, that does kind of clarify it. It was more the R1s and 2s.
Yeah.
Aren't eligible to apply for a variance.
R1s and 2s are eligible, but absolutely, R3s and below.
Did you make that clear to council, that they cannot?
He wasn't there.
No, I know.
So, the implication here is that the requirement for owner occupied is something that you can give a variance for?
If it's a permissible use within the area and the condition is that it has to be owner occupied, I would say that, yeah, that could be a variance that would be granted, because it's permissible in that zone, the use is permissible. You know, and to me, owner occupied would be like number of parking spaces or setbacks or, you know, I mean, as one of the conditions of being a permissible in that zone, and if they're, it's not owner occupied, then, yeah, I think that could be a variance request.
So, the findings being such that there wouldn't be any negative impact to the neighborhood, surrounding area, the spirit of the code, minimum variance required, these all pass muster, is what you're telling me? Or, or specific for that piece of property?
Yeah, I mean, everything else passes, involve controls, et cetera, if that's what you're asking.
Well, that's it, I, you know, you know, a problem with specific piece of property is because I don't live at it, so I guess I need a variance. And houses differ than, what is it, 108 Grosvenor at the time? Didn't have parking, it didn't have our street parking.
Very different.
And the guy couldn't use it because he didn't want to live here. I mean, that's a problem, what if you don't want to live in your house that you own? That can't be corrected, I guess, huh?
Hear what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.